We have one of two Regents on the phone and we're waiting for a second to call in. So, I'm not going to call the meeting to order for another couple of minutes here while we wait for Regent Johnson.
I am present.
Regent Johnson is present. Regent Simonsen?
Yes, I'm present.
All right, then, we are going to jump in here and I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the University of Minnesota's Board of Regents. We're here today to take action on two very important items, and I've said this before, but it bears repeating, this is a truly momentous occasion in the university's history. Today, for only the 17th time in this institution's 167-year history, we will appoint a president. Since we interviewed our finalist, Joan Gable, last week, we have heard from the university community and from people across the state, and the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. Thank you again to everyone who has engaged with us across the various university, internal, external stakeholder groups and across this entire process. We're going to consider two items, separate action items today. First, we're going to take a vote on the appointment of our president, and then, secondly, we are going to vote on an employment agreement for that president. So, with that preamble out of the way, noting the presence of Regents Johnson and Simonsen by telephone and the remaining 10 of us in person here, we'll move right into our first item of business, the appointment of the president of the University of Minnesota. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Joan Gable as president of the University of Minnesota? Regent Omari.
Thank you, Chair McMillan. Before I make a motion, I'll just quickly reiterate something that I said previously. In my short 33 years of life, chairing this committee has been top-three most humbling and most greatest honors of those 33 years. And so, with that, after thousands of hours of work, credit to the staff, credit to the Presidential Search Advisory Committee and to this board for entrusting us with this monumental task, I enthusiastically make the motion to hire Joan T.A. Gable as the 17th president of the University of Minnesota.
Thank you, Regent Omari. There a second? Very good, thank you. Regent Lucas, I'll open it up for discussion. Regent Cohen.
Thanks, Chair McMillan. I just, I want to say that I am certainly going to very, very enthusiastically vote yes, because I think we have found a person who has many, many talents and skills and will be a wonderful fit for the University of Minnesota. And also, I believe that we have a bonus in that she will be the first female president of the University of Minnesota, which I think is also very, very exciting. But let me be clear, it is not because she's a woman that I am voting for her, but it is because of her tremendous capacity to lead this university. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Cogan. Regent Lucas.
Thank you, Chair McMillan. I too am very enthusiastic about this vote, and in particular, I am pleased that she started her journey in the liberal arts, and I think that's very indicative of how a lot of people come out of liberal arts, follow their path, and here we are today, and I'm very, very pleased about that journey.
Thank you, Regent Lucas. Other Regents? Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As is commonplace around this board, I share Regent Cohen's perspective on this matter. I've already, of course, made commentary on a process and concerns, but that's not what today is about. With respect to currently Provost Gable, I've very much enjoyed having an opportunity to interact with her, understand her background, understand her way of thinking, and I am thoroughly impressed. I am excited about the prospects for the institution. I think the university community is going to find her engaging and remarkably bright. And from that standpoint, I could not be happier. I do note that in, you know, having somewhat of a career in HR, that there have been two categories, people who interview very well, and sometimes it's not the right fit, and people who interview very well, and it's an amazing fit. And I am confident that Provost Gable will fall into one of those categories. But in all seriousness, I think she's going to be fantastic. I look forward to spending the rest of my time on this board, working with her to identify and pursue a strategic vision for the University of Minnesota system in serving the state of Minnesota, and I think we're really blessed to have her available to us with her talents over these coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Rocha. Regent Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, members, sometimes our mistakes in life become very enlightening. I'm going to tell you about a mistake I made in the PSAC that I think speaks highly of Joan Gable, and I hope this doesn't destroy the confidentiality, Mr. Chairman of our committee, but after we interviewed Ms. Gable, whatever day it was, we have a little discussion amongst the PSAC afterwards, I boldly and mistakenly said, "Our next president of the university is going to be a woman," right after she interviewed, because I knew it was going to be her, and that speaks volumes to both to my mistake as well as enlightening how wonderful this person is.
Thank you, Regent Swigum. Regent Anderson.
Thank you, Chair McMillan. I did make a comment back when the search committee was being formed, that I like to look at the world through a glass that's half-full rather than half-empty, so I was kind of glad I was not on the search committee, simply because sometimes I overlook faults because of that nature. I also want to tell you that this process has been incredibly open, in my opinion. I actually journeyed out to Morris to hear Provost Gable speak out there. It wasn't too far from my home, and I've heard her here several times. It's a very important job for the state of Minnesota, and I think we've given the people of Minnesota a chance to weigh in. For those people that do send comments to the presidential website or to our Regents' office, I want you to know at least this Regent has read every single one of them. Overwhelmingly, they were very positive, and of course, there's always some criticisms, and I understand that, and I've put that into my weight, too. That being said, I am ready to endorse the concept of Provost Gable becoming the next president of the University of Minnesota.
Thank you. Regent Anderson. Others? Otherwise, I will call for it. Regent Beeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to reiterate my appreciation of the search committee chair and the members and the citizens, again, for delivering this candidate. This is a great job, and I think you know that Provost Gable, you're a great candidate, and we know that, too, so it goes both ways, and we're embarking on a journey together. This is not Provost Gable going on her own, but we are starting together in a journey, and it is a journey, it's not a destination, and it's an amazing journey. This is an amazing university, and you'll be a great university president, so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Regent Beeson. I deeply appreciate that nod to the transitional element that stands before us now, and I'll have more to say about that, and you're going to have a key role to play in that process. So, it feels like, you know, an underwhelming moment to actually call for this vote, because it is a momentous vote, but it isn't underwhelming at all when I look at our candidate out there in the audience, and let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I jumped the gun there. I think I heard two ayes on the phone.
Yes.
Outstanding. Wow. I see Provost Gable and now President Designate Gable out in the audience, and I'd ask her to stand and be recognized and then come forward and greet the Board of Regents. right here in the room with me, which I knew as well, and wonderful to have that opportunity to have you come forward and for the assembled audience to be part of recognizing just what we did and the excitement and optimism that lie ahead. Now, we need to reduce to writing the terms and conditions under which Joan Gable will become our next university president, and I would ask the board to now shift to the second item of business, which is the approval of the employment agreement, which with the help of a lot of people in the room, including the Office of our General Counsel, has indeed been reduced to writing. And I'd first of all ask for a motion to approve the document, the employment agreement that's in your document materials.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. And I'll open the floor for comments, questions, and other before we take a vote on that. Regent Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment from my standpoint, and I do understand that all board members may not agree with this, but I especially appreciate such a benign of this contract, which regards the potential, at board's discretion, of doing some type of performance pay, incentive pay evaluation with objective measures that maybe are appropriate and honorable to our university mission sometime in the future. And I'm a real believer, folks, in performance pay, as long as we can agree upon those measurements. So, I appreciate that being in the contract, Mr. Chairman, if not at least part of the contract first year.
I think, thank you, Regent Swigum. I think there is a range of feelings about the opportunity to move in the direction of what I'll call incentive compensation, and I think it's something the industry's transitioning to. It comes with tremendous promise. It also comes with some challenges in terms of how to prioritize and how to put in writing and then execute and how to build into, you know, institutionalize, if you will, across a leadership team. It's something that Vice Chair Powell and I are very much committed to, and I appreciate your support of it, but it needs more work, and we need to get it right when we do move in that direction. But its inclusion in the contract is reflective of the fact that we expect this board to work with our next president to determine when and how and if that can be done. I come at it with optimism. Regent Cohen.
Thanks, Chair McMillan. We probably know that I have a very different point of view, and I won't be here to state it, so I think I will state it right now. In terms of incentive pay in the academic area, I know that both our Chair and Vice Chair come from the corporate world, and incentive pay is something that's very, much more easily measured as profit-loss in the corporate world. Are we going to measure student achievement and have that be an incentive for the president? Are we going to measure faculty research papers? I believe that incentive pay for a president of a university is going in the wrong direction. I thought I better state it now, since I won't have that opportunity to do it next year when you're talking about her contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Cohen. I tried to embody what I know as, when I said, "A range of perspectives on this issue," and we don't need to resolve it today, but I appreciate and respect, and the board does your perspective on that. Regent Powell.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair McMillan, and I just wanted to add a comment on the incentive piece. First of all, my sense is that there's support on the board to do that. However, I would quickly add, I don't think it's unanimous support. As you've heard, there are different points of view around the table, but I think what has become very clear is that while there's great interest in the incentive idea, there are 12 different ideas on how we might do that. So, we're all, so there are just many, many different ideas, and so, I appreciate the patience of the board in allowing us to insert, you know, an intention to do this, but we just need time, I think, as a board, to consider the various approaches and come to a consensus on the right way to do this, and clearly, we are not there now.
Regent Beeson on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I think the contract is fair and appropriate, and I appreciate the board leadership in negotiating what we see in front of us now. I do come from the corporate world, but I do have reticence about incentive-based, and I think what we maybe all agree on, though, is that this isn't something that needs to be done immediately, and we've got a candidate who's going to be new to the job, and the idea, she may have her own ideas as to what's a priority and what needs the incentive, then we're still finishing up the strategic plan. So, this may be a year-two or year-three sort of element, but I would hope that we not focus on it this first year.
Thank you, Regent Beeson. It is indeed written in a way that it would become a year-two-type focus, and we shall see where we go, but thank you also for bringing us back to the broader context of the entire package reflected in the agreement, and your board leadership believes it is fair and appropriate, and we wholeheartedly endorse it. So, Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regent Cohen is two-for-two today in making comments that set me up well for what I would like to say. Going out on top, Regent Cohen, right? Yes, you know, her point to the difficulty in figuring out how to apply this sort of market-private sector concept of incentive compensation to this environment also shows, I think, some of the difficulty or some of the differences between the, you know, market-driven private sector and a public institution, but I also would like to follow her desire to make comments when she has the opportunity. Mine's a little bit different, because I have a little bit more time left on the board, but as the Chair noted in the opening remarks to the previous motion lead-up, we don't do this very often, and so this is an opportunity to make some comments for posterity, to the extent posterity will care. So, I've just jotted a few thoughts that I'd like to get into the record as we move forward here, and unless someone objects, rather than the unwieldy President Designate Gable, I will just refer to her as President Gable, with the understanding that that's what I mean. Turning to the contract itself, to some extent, I'm cursed by this longstanding experience with the institution and with the board, because I recall a time when it was a different, a bit of a different economic model. And so, it's clear that this is a substantial contract. It's a lot of money, and to most Minnesotans, it is a tremendous amount of money. But by the same token, it's also clear that President Gable would command this kind of compensation, whether she was an established law partner at a firm, whether she was in business in any number of enterprises, but just the same, the social compact with people in public service and with the public sector generally, it recognizes that service itself is an enrichment that acts as a component of the compensation provided for doing the job. We expect that of other civic leaders, military leaders. Public servants generally recognize that they're not going to reach the levels that the private sector reaches, but nonetheless, they do it because there's an honor and respect that comes with it. The concept of private sector market comparison for executive compensation at public universities across the country is a relatively new phenomenon, arising primarily over the past 25 years. We should closely analyze the relationship between the shift from a public-service-minded approach to that funding to a focus on the financial benefits to administration, that in the face of apparent reduction in public funding for institutions from states across the nation. Specifically, you should look at which one led to the other. We tend to see one as being a response one way, but quite frankly, it may be that the one is happening has led to a diminishing amount of public support. But in this particular case, I would actually pose the question, is this really a market-based process? Now, first, let's ignore the subsidy from the state to the university, and let's not factor in access to publicly guaranteed credit provided to the young people who would not qualify for that credit in an open market. Also, let's not take into account philanthropy, public facilities, or the university's obligations to ensure broad access to a university education to a diverse population in terms of demographic, geographic, and economic factors. Moving past those characteristics that differentiate public higher ed from the fundamentally market-driven enterprises, we should look at how we, as a board, approach these types of contracts with their unmistakable impact on how the public and policymakers view the university in our requests for public support. For instance, if we were engaging in a market-driven process, we would do a lot of things differently, and not just in terms of data practices and public openness, which I've addressed before, but first, we would not openly limit ourselves to a single option before starting to negotiate. When we were down to just one option, our bargaining position has been changed, and not for the stronger. At a minimum, it's limited by the perceived cost of an inconvenience and the public embarrassment if we were to have to start over if the demanded terms were not acceptable to the board. The declaration of a sole candidate is not a best practice in most market-based negotiations. Secondly, as a board, we should conduct ourselves congenially, but we should also conduct ourselves seriously and responsibly. Good business sense and the duty of loyalty to the university dictate that our remarks should be appropriate and reserved to permit our representatives to negotiate with a desired candidate without the handicap of members of our board already having declared their support before such terms are known. It also doesn't help our effort to indicate that board members are disposed to meddle in the candidate's efforts to put together a team to lead the university. Each of us should understand that whether personal, whatever personal benefit we may think might be derived from suggesting the board should weigh in on those decisions are outweighed by the impropriety of such remarks and the prospect that they could discourage a quality leader from wanting to join us. Despite these issues, it does not appear that President Gable has sought to take advantage of our position, and in the context, has actually sought a reasonable agreement. While a number of us pursued clarity well before the search began, that candidates would be informed of our intent to restore executive compensation to previous respectable levels as a means to reduce costs and increase public support for the university, the process President Gable entered did not provide information of that kind. To the contrary, although the board did not establish a position on the topic, our process indicated to candidates that compensation would be in line with higher education trends. So, within that context, President Gable's terms reflect a measured response to those current trends and, in fact, reflect a net gain in the effort to address the exponential increase in administrative salaries at public higher-ed institutions. Further, while she asserted her support for a market basis for compensation levels on Friday when I posed the question, President Gable has indicated an openness to a data-driven conversation about these costs, and with us and with other state leaders who have an interest in ensuring state and tuition dollars are well-managed, to maximize quality while maintaining reasonable access to a university education. In short, our conversation continues. Based on these factors and based on my assessment of the quality of the candidate, I support the proposed contract and join my colleagues in welcoming President Gable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Regent Rocha. I'm going to, before I go, I've got a couple other people here in the room, but I want to be sure I don't forget our telephonic participants. Regent Johnson or Regent Simonsen? Either or, both of you interested in, have questions, comments, or anything to add to the record?
Mr. Chairman, Dean Johnson, if I may, a brief comment.
Please.
Having reviewed the proposed contract for President Gable, I think it's fair, it's equitable, I like its position in the Big Ten with our peer group, and you think about the responsibilities that a president of the university is going to be engaged in with 65,000 students and a $4 billion-plus budget to manage with the legislative coming forward and new governor, I think it's more than fair, and I'm very supportive of the compensation package that has been negotiated with her and with our leadership team. So, thank you for the efforts as we move this process forward today.
Thank you. Regent Johnson, Regent Simonsen?
Yeah, thank you very much. I can't say it as eloquently as Regent Rocha did, but I certainly support what he did say, and I look very much forward to a strategic plan that President Gable can put forth that will have metrics, very defined goals, objectives, and I'm supportive of the compensation plan associated with that. It can either be done with an incentive compensation or it's based on job performance. I like the idea of incentive compensation, so I'm very much in favor of the contract as it is.
Thank you, Regent Simonsen. Regent Shu.
Thank you, Chair McMillan. I didn't speak last time, but I want to thank everybody for all the effort that went into this, leading up to this, and then the board leadership for negotiating, and President Gable for working together to negotiate a fair agreement for all parties. I do support the incentive compensation discussion. I was disappointed when I saw the first draft, but I do accept what has been put in here as to what our direction will be in the next, hopefully, the next year. And I think we did come to an excellent result, even though the process was itself was less than perfect. A lot has been said on that topic and written, and I look And I look, I look forward to working with President Gabel in, in, in the coming years. And I, I was wondering if Steve Swigum was going to say, or Regent Swigum was going to say, "When can you start?" And I, you know, I would, I would, I would have actually supported an earlier start date, but I think this gives everybody plenty of time to transition, and I look forward to the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Shu. Regent Lucas?
No.
Oh, sorry. I had you, I saw, I thought I saw a hand up earlier. I believe, looking at the, the board here, that we, we are ready to take our second vote of the morning, and.
Chair McMillan?
Yes. Regent Johnson.
Thank you again. Sorry for interruption as you're getting ready to take the vote, but just taking a step back for a moment this morning, based on the previous vote, and now what I perceive is to, coming to a unanimous vote on President Gabel on, on her contract, I really think it, as you stated, it is a new day, a, a new chance for relationships and a new beginning. And I, I for one want to assure President Gabel that we stand as partners. You know, oftentimes, it can be an administration versus the board and those kind of things. We will have differences of opinion, differences of strategy, but I really am excited about standing with her and her administration as, as partnership in, in this great university and moving forward. And I hope each of us will do that, and I'm confident we will, and I'm confident that she and, and her team will do likewise.
Thank you, Regent Johnson. The motion before the board is to approve the five-year agreement, employment agreement, between the president and, and this board, dated this 18th day of December. I'd call for a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
That came in as a, as a, as a, as an aye in favor, so.
Trailing aye.
The telepho, the telephonic delay effect, so. Regent Johnson, you, you predicted it. I'm never one to predict, but I do believe we had a unanimous vote. I am thrilled. I won't ask our President Designate to stand and take another round of applause, but we certainly, we could do that. Let me bring the meeting to a close with the last item of business here, and it isn't one for a vote, but it's one I've talked to most of you about, and you know that our, our goal this year has been to, one of our top five goals of this board has been to effectuate a thoughtful, planful, and well-orchestrated transition. We now move from the search phase and the, the agreement phase for our next president to the transition phase. And as we go from our 16th to our 17th president, that transition is mightily important, and it is at this time that I want to announce the creation of and the leadership of a Presidential Transition Committee. And I'm going to ask, I have asked Regent Beeson and Vice President Kramer to serve as co-chairs of that committee, and their work will be twofold. One, to help recognize and celebrate the work of President Eric Kaler, which has been monumental and, and exceptional, at the same time as onboarding President Gabel, or President Designate Gabel. That doesn't, that's hard to say. Anyway, two parts, two key roles, and to help them accomplish this work, we've identified eight additional members, Provost Karen Hansen, Senior Vice President Brian Burnett, FCC Chair and Professor in the College of Pharmacy Amy Pittenger, UMF CEO and President Kathy Schmittelkoffer, Professor Rajiv Vaidyanathan from the Labavit School at UMD, U of M Alumni Associate President Lisa Lewis, and one further system campus leader to be determined by, oh, and our Executive Director and Corporate Secretary Brian Steves. I thank them in advance for their time, effort, and commitment over the coming months. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.[1760.11][1760.11]